Welcome to the selectmen's meeting for the town of Acton, Maine for July 17th, 2019. First item, salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Town administrative weekly update.
All right, not too many this week. So Horn Pond has been the subject of conversation. So I reached out to the Department of Conservation, actually I reached out to the Warden Service for State of Maine, you know, owns that property. So Department of Conservation told me that they go out once a week and actually clean it and pick up the trash and everything. They admit how bad it is over there and they, really the only answer they have is that for people to call the Sheriff's Department continuously. He wasn't aware that we had a deputy contract for the town, so that kind of made him feel a little better because he said that in the past, the Sheriff's Department wasn't wanting to go down there for, you know, 45 minutes, so where we've got someone local. But there's a lot of talk about it going on, so I mean, I just, you know, I told the people that we would look into it and they just want you to keep calling the Sheriff's Department, so if we could share that with the public.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Facebook's not 911.
No.
No matter how you look at it.
Neither do I.
You know? Yeah, true.
No.
True.
I mean, I wanted to look into it for you on your behalf, but there's not a lot that we can do.
Yeah, I've seen some of the comments on there, so.
And he did say that, I'm sorry, this, I do have this gentleman's number, Bill Cunningham. I didn't know if Ed maybe wanted to have a conversation with him, but he's got some other ideas if it continues to get worse, but he says that he sees ups and downs in it and he didn't realize it was getting that bad again, so.
Can we just ask the deputy to kind of, when he's in the area, swing by, you know, just kind of swing in?
Yeah, I know that Ted Krizak reached out to Bill King as well and there's some conversations, so. And I will send an email to Sivony as well, asking him.
All right. Good. Thank you.
I had a call about Fortured Road, but you had a meeting with Road Commissioner and the resident. Everything is good?
I feel like it is.
Okay.
Okay.
HEB sent an email, wondering if you guys got the engineering plan that they sent over, and I told them that you did. They wanted to know if it would be worth a workshop to decide what the town's next step was, or if you were just good with reviewing the information for now.
I would think a workshop.
We can't really go ahead and tell we know what the other towns are going to do and all that, so.
Yeah.
If we have a workshop, we have to have a workshop with another town.
Yeah. That was sent, did the road committee get a copy of that too?
Yeah, they were actually inside our workshop hours, remember, when we got that big, big one? So I think Leslie has a copy of it.
Good.
They should have a copy, I think we put a copy in.
We have a master copy at the town hall, if anybody wants to look at it.
Yep.
So do we want to wait and touch base with the road committee and see what they...
Yeah, I'd see what they, you know, I mean, hopefully they've looked at it or will look at it and.
I know that she's going to update, I did email with Leslie today, and she's going to update you on Loop Road, so maybe at that time we can ask her if they've had a chance to look at it and what their thoughts are. For the selectmen's meeting last week, we went to executive session, I got three, four different phone calls. David, I'm gonna let you handle that one.
Oh, you're talking about the live stream?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was classic. So, I don't know if anybody in the room is aware of, but last week when we went into executive session there, because of the new format, I believe the way we're doing the meetings there, I think maybe it was a little confusion on the...
Right, so it's a two-step, so as I understand it, is that when they, we're running live is a button that, inside the room, that they have to start, turn it live, right Eric? And, so that runs live, and if you decide to stop the meeting for any reason, you've got to turn that off. But the tape, the tape, they can just pause. So I think that we had switched shifts, the employees changed mid-meeting, and what happened was, she did, they stopped the tape, but the live stream ran live.
Unfortunately, there was some individuals that might have said a few things that may not have probably wanted to be on TV. I did get a few phone calls on it and...
And we do have a recorded video, someone took a video with their phone when they realized that they were talking about individuals.
Somebody did take a video of the live stream and unfortunately, there were people in this room that said some stuff they shouldn't have said on TV, and I guess we're going to have to decide how we're going to deal with that in the future and...
I don't know, somebody's on the phone.
Yeah. And, but, in the future here, we're going to figure out whether or not we're going to leave this camera on or not.
Yeah.
Because when we go into an executive session, theoretically, the meeting is still on, and, but, that, if we're going to, if we're going to have people in the room, they probably ought to be aware that what they're saying is being recorded and will be recorded next. I think next time it should be recorded, because unfortunately, we had members of committees that were saying stuff that they probably shouldn't have been saying, and we're already having issues with personnel, and we can see why after watching that live stream. So, just a heads up that you were watched.
East Shore Drive, I spoke to Joe briefly, I don't know if he's here.
No.
Mr. Letourneau, he said that he's going to be, having that road paved real soon, and he just asked if the board would support some type of notice, maybe we could put something on the website or cable, just to kind of give people a heads up of when the paving would take place, so I told him I'd mention it to you.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, it's got to get notice out there somehow, so.
Is he gonna, maybe you can put a sign up at the beginning of the road?
I don't know, I didn't discuss that with him. He said that when he heard back from the paving company, that he'd come back and give you exact dates and stuff, and then maybe you guys can talk about what you authorize or recommend.
Okay.
That's good.
So there was a forced meeting scheduled for last evening, they weren't able to get quorum, but the cable did show up, so you'll see that bill. I did speak to the chair earlier in the day, there was some confusion about how many positions were actually open. If you recall from town meeting, we had Tom Cashin's seat, he respectfully declined, so that seat, no other nominations, so we had that seat open already, and then we had another seat that, Mrs. Baker, that resigned, I remember, earlier in the year. So we have two seats, so he's looking for the board to maybe move forward with advertising to see if we can find some people interested in filling them. Is that something you want me to do?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I wasn't able to make that meeting because I was, as a fire commission...
Double booked.
I was double booked.
It worked out, I mean, they didn't have a quorum, they didn't have a meeting anyways, so.
I did talk to Mr. Vodkins.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Last week, we talked a little bit about the Melsom drawdown letter. Ed, you told me to have them laminated, so we did, they're a zipi copy, waiting to be picked up tomorrow, so I'll do that in the morning time. The other, I got an email too from Adele Gritchlin, Adele, did you see that? She wanted to know if it was something that could be done in the tax bill. We talked about this a little bit in Chapley last night, because they had the same question, and to do an actual insert is going to cost more money than the original mailing.
When does our bills go out though?
Well, our bills go out mid-September.
Yeah, it's almost too late.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we could put a little blurb, you could, you know, instead of reminding people to recycle, you could on the actual tax bill, just put a line in there, but it all depends on, you know, when we can commit and so forth.
I don't think it's worth trying to, try to do it that way, so many better ways of getting it out there.
Talking about maybe, just thinking all out here, but everybody who lives on Melsom Lake has to drive by the same spot. They take a right or a left at the foot of the lake, maybe some sort of banner saying "Lake Drawdown" starting.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe we can go in halves to something with Chapley.
Chapley.
On something for that, yeah, banner would be well worthwhile.
Most, majority of people come from south, north, and I, maybe even one, Goose Pond or something, I don't know, but I think that would probably grab their attention on the way by.
And laminate signs.
At least we attempted it.
So I'll send an email to Adele, letting her know about the tax bills and see if I can get her and Roland started, he's a Chapley rep. Maybe they can work on a banner and get some prices.
If they went out in July or August, yeah, but, you know.
I've got somebody that makes banners and stuff like that, I could get a place on that for that.
Next is just an update on the rec field. As I understand it, the excavating piece of it has been done, cleared and completed. I was CC'd in a couple of emails between the electrician and code enforcement, so I trust all of that went well, I didn't hear anything. So that piece is done, we released the excavating check, we're still waiting for the electrician to get his bucket truck up there to put the actual bulbs in, so we're still holding on his check. He did tell me today, he came by and said that he hopes to get them in on Friday.
Okay.
And I did turn over, the Whitmans came in with the actual book.
We got the book and the keys.
Book and a bag of keys.
And we gave them to Carol.
Yeah, and she is looking for one more, she's looking for the electronic registration form, so I'm going to email her what I have and we'll reach out to the Whitmans again.
She had said in their meeting that they're going to talk about maybe getting all-new keys too, and then she would let us know what their vote was, so, just something to think about, whether you guys want new keys or not.
It's going to be up to them if they feel they need them.
Right, so.
I got an email today from the auditors, just sending us the reminder that preparation for the town of Acton's audit, scheduled for August 5th through the 9th, and the school to take care, take place the 5th through the 6th. Sent us a letter, the management letter, which you had already signed when I saw, but also, just in case you're interested in looking at it, this is everything that all the departments have to...
Oh, yes.
We gather to send them ahead of time so that they can kind of better be prepared for it.
Want to look at that, David, I know what it is.
It's just a checklist that they send us, yeah.
Can I get a copy of this?
I'm sorry?
Can I get a copy?
Sure, you can have that one, I've got it in email, so you can have that one. I don't know if the management letter was signed before or after you came on, but you want that, that talks about the specifics and details of what they're going to do.
Okay. Awesome.
Do we know, I know the fire department, remember we went over to check the, what was it, the air pump? Did you ever hear if anybody ever came out to, okay, David.
David, I'll fill them in afterwards, he's a liaison.
Yep.
We should check too and see if that rail ever went up.
Right, yeah.
I think that, I don't remember, I was seeing the bill.
I don't either.
So our insurance company had a couple of minor issues at the fire station, and Kim was just wondering if they got completed. They started with a, you know, let's say, a two-page list, and we got it down to one or two items.
Yep.
One of them, the chief was having a hard time getting, because there was only one person that did this type of inspection, what was that on, Ed?
The SCBA compressor?
Yeah.
Yeah, something.
Yeah.
And then, they, then we're going to put a railing up, actually the guys would know, is that railing up by that door? No, okay, so we need to move on that. There's going to be a small railing.
And we know it's dangerous.
That's been an issue for a while, is that railing.
What, the railing? That's what I hear.
Yeah. Okay. The same railing I remember then.
Well, when you come out of the office, it's like level and then it drops.
Yeah, somebody misstepped and fell down, and it should have a rail in there. It's a safety issue.
Yep. I was able to find a one-day ACO training class for Jerry.
Good.
It's not the complete training, but it's well on his way, so, it was only $25, so I signed him up for that, and it's in Augusta on Thursday, so.
He's on board with that?
Yeah, yes, I called him first to make sure he was wanting to go.
Cool.
And then I called to see if we could get him in, and they took him in, so. O'Donnell and Associates is going to be here on August 14th at 1 o'clock to discuss tax commitment. So generally, what happens, right now that we've gotten through all of the budgets, now that we've gotten through the budgets, Michelle has entered everything in, the school numbers, the town numbers, so the piece now is waiting for O'Donnell to finish up all of their field visits. So they do the field visits and they adjust assessments based on permits for the last year. So as soon as that's done, we dump it all into a tax rate calculator, and it shows us all of our numbers, and Dennis will make some recommendations based on overlay of how much abatements and supplements you've had in the prior years, your general fund balance, so it's real informational.
So when are they coming?
August 14th at 1 o'clock. And we're hoping that evening, because I think that's a Wednesday, to be able to present to you some different choices, depending on what kind of numbers you want to see left, and you can maybe commit taxes that night.
Yep.
I sent an email to the road guys, the road commissioners, I talked to one of them in person, but followed up in the email, just have paper trail and remind them, if you remember, back in the October, October, November, when we had some personnel changes, the board gave some leniency as far as those required classes that municipal requires. Now that the dust has settled and we have everybody in their positions, we really need to get those done. I offered that it would be easier if we could get them all in one room, throw a couple pizzas in front of them, drop the screen, and just go through them together, because it, you know what I mean? By the time I set up a username and password for each one of them, teach them how to get on there, I mean, go through them, they go through the test, they print, and then I've got to go back in and get their certificates, I mean, we're talking a couple of days of work just to get it set up and done. So if I can spend four or five hours and we can all answer the questions together, and we've done that in the past with the transfer station and the insurance company is fine with it, being done that way.
Okay.
So.
How many of them need to do it?
All of them.
All of them?
Right.
Well, I mean, assuming, well, I guess, let me rephrase that, so we know that Joe and his one employee need to, and according to Mr. Letourneau, it's just the two of them now. On the other side, I mean, I'm going to have to look at Will's list, but I know that he's got himself, he's got Mr. Gannon.
He's, he's up at Terry, right?
Yeah.
He's already done it.
I was going to say, he's done.
And I have to make sure that they change yearly which ones as new employees come in, so I'll check on him, that's another thing, I need to put him in the drug testing pool. I feel like he had a couple of guys, so maybe five or six, tops, so. I sent them an email just saying, you know, kind of like, I don't want to hound them, but you know, it'd kind of be nice to do it by the middle of August.
Needs to get done.
Yep. And I sent a couple other emails to staff, just verifying with the change of the budget, everybody's new budget coming in, with everybody getting kind of changed, adjusted hours, you know, including ours upstairs, just trying to figure out what everybody's hours are going to be now that they've been approved to get more, so the board will have that, so I'll get you that when I get all of it. And sent an email about the website, so we're still trying to transfer over the website, but before we want to get too far into it, it's kind of hard to explain without logging in, but when you log into what they call the PDF creator, when you log in, you have to add a PDF, and then you copy and paste the URL and you put it wherever on the site that you want it. Well, we'll use me, for example, let's say the fire chief position, so I have to upload that PDF, I put it there, I create my URL and I put the notice on the homepage. Well, a week or two goes by and let's say that it's closed now, no more applications. So I'll go on the homepage and I'll remove the text that, we're no longer looking at applications, so it's not stale on there, but we never go through and remove the PDFs from that page. So we have hundreds of PDFs there, and a lot of them are just old things, I mean, some of them, like your, you know, your old tax bills from 2006, you want to leave, you know, but I can't make that decision for other departments, because I don't know what they're using on their page and what they're not, so, once we all get a chance to clean that up, we will start working on looking at the new one, the new website, and trying to figure out how we can get a combined staff effort to do training all at once, and I've got a couple of options to see what they think, you know, is going to be easier, because the goal is really to have the departments maintain as much of their own page as they can. I think that other than the treasurer and codes, we handle most everybody else's, we do their pages for them, so.
Okay.
And then, the last thing I have, which is just kind of pending, is we still need to figure out how we're going to address the map, mapping issues we have, we've got some discrepancies between Maps Online and Trio. Land use secretary, Deputy CEO and myself started working on one particular page, we made some progress, we were then waiting for Cardiographics, who was going to run some reports, because we kind of figured out what was going on with it. He had, he had a situation, he's been out for about six weeks, he is back and he's run that report, so we need to start figuring out which staff is going to keep looking at that so that we can make everybody's job and life easier by having the most up-to-date information on those maps.
Good, good.
Yeah, the one or neither, Fairground people were just very thankful.
Oh, for the crash?
Yeah, yeah. Talked to Bob, handled that. The Jim has gone over, well, the snowbird, say thank you, thank you. I did have the individual that spoke about the parking lot library drop-off, did say that she reviewed the meeting and just said we kind of left it, so. I mean, it's, I think it's a big budget process, but is there something temporary you could do? I know that there was some talk with code enforcement about restructuring that whole area there as far as parking lot, and that's, we didn't budget for it this year, I don't know if that hill is any part of that.
It would have been, because I think that was, I think that entrance was going to get closed off, coming around the other way, I think, is that the way it was going to be?
The only issue is, to solve that problem, you would have to extend that out quite a ways, now you're encroaching the...
Building.
The old building, I mean, can't we just put a guardrail, not a guardrail, but a...
We could put something up there, I'm sure.
Like some sort of fence, fence in there.
Would I have to do that?
The least expensive thing to do.
Yeah.
Because you'd affect the other building by doing that.
Right.
And you don't want to come down in there, drop off anyway, so, it would take quite a ways to solve that problem.
Fence or rail or...
When we paved that back in the day, when we did that, we discussed it, and it was quite a process.
Yeah, maybe just, yeah, put something in, some pokes up or something, before it wasn't a rail or something.
Yeah, I recall, got a couple prices on a couple, you know, I mean, stone fencing or something like that, you know, some local guys or something.
Did you deal with Crete before for the rails?
Side of town, so.
Did you deal with Crete for this rail out here?
We will discuss with District 1 and see what you can come up with.
I think it was Crete welding.
No, it was the Milton Fabrication has done everything else.
It's Mr. Crete.
Oh, is it name, oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I know him by his Milton Fabrication.
I wonder if he does.
Well, we're waiting for him to do the fire department one, if he hasn't put that one up yet.
I think this can be done cheaper than what he'd normally do.
Okay, that's what I was...
So maybe we can get with District 1 and see.
Okay, I'm going to ask them.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Yeah.
Oh, the fire extinguishers that had to go out to service came back in, so they're going to take the loners, they're in the hallway, if we have any volunteers to help me, put them back, that would be appreciative. Your picture's up on the website, and that's it, that's all I have for non-meeting stuff.
Okay. Good. You two have anything else for Jen?
No.
No? Okay. Well, I would say at this point then, if you're all set, we'll sign the bills and the warrants and...
Did I, was I making any changes to the agenda, what was I doing with that?
Ah, yeah.
I think what we're, what my suggestion is to move G up to A and A down to G, swap, flip them, can we do that?
You can do anything you want.
All right. Anything else that needs to be on there or taken off?
I don't think so. Nope, I think that's it.
All right, so I'll go through those couple of things, will you sign the bills?
Okay. Okay. I'm going to commence signing some bills.
I left the minutes in there too, if you can look at.
Ah, okay.
There we go, I'll look at those, I was at, since I did the bills.
He's right here, I'd like to get a description right here, right on that one page, if we could, if someone wants to mention that, who's the liaison?
What is that? What'd you just say?
Here, you got the days?
Yeah.
If we can get a description.
Flip a little.
I know, I know, that's on the town card, you know what I mean? For the actual, well, what I used to do is, the guys were down there, what they did, and then I did this for the town, right here, from page I went there. It's easy, because instead of, if you say this guy's working on this, but there's someone else working on another project, you'd have to go through and go through each one of those, just give a description here, bam, I worked on, we worked on this project, this project, this project, and then you can go through the rest of the...
Can I ask him?
Just a suggestion.
It is.
Can I run down to the rec meeting? I just want to talk to them about that storage area.
Yeah.
Is that, all right.
We will have a note check.
I'll be back in a minute.
But wait here.
Yeah, I was trying to get equipment, moved around, parked for the night. Had two excavators down there, two trucks front, and skid steer, it was a lot.
How do you run back and forth between both excavators?
I had my father run them.
Oh, okay.
And I had my new guy run the skid steer, you see my skid steer tracks I bought?
I didn't see it, but...
It was awesome.
Those paid attention to the road.
Good idea, we appreciate that. Had people flipping cones today, it was good. It's not really funny when you're in the excavator, the cones, the siding is flying.
Yeah, exactly, goes by the windshield, and we were down working on a road today and they just, people are just, they just fly. No KFO, works on safety.
Actually, the worst, the worst one today was the FedEx guy.
Oh, really?
He kind of blew up through the job, I bet he was going 40 when he went through, if not faster now, and bang, 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 all the way through, so. I started dishing one of them. Haven't we started on the other side yet?
No, we've got a paving project, hopefully finishing up tomorrow. Planks supposed to come in and tomorrow and Friday, do reclaim just over a mile of road.
We held them off a week.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we got slip line forms coming in on Monday, and they were supposed to come in on Monday, but there was no way we were going to be able to do it at the same time.
Plaque?
Plaque, oh, they're sopping it out, I think.
Yeah, they were finished grading it today, put the feathers and everything in, and they're going to, they say they're going to pave, base one in tomorrow, and then top coat another mile of road.
Yeah.
On Friday. It was my Friday day off.
Oh, yeah.
It's okay, I get called in on a Friday, it's overtime.
Right.
It works, I can do that.
It's supposed to be a hard work.
Yeah.
Saturday's supposed to be a hundred.
Yeah, I got to work Saturday too. Transfer station, that'll be stinky. Well, that's just the, that's just the time off, I just have to keep track of that. Yeah, you don't have to do anything with that, you don't do anything on that side, that's just kind of her filing system over here, with the exception of signing that. And usually you sign that after you look at all the bills, but...
Excuse me, they need new keys to get in, and they'll go look and see what they need to do.
The waste things you And it worked fine, so.
Thank you. I figured.
I wonder if it's, there were two paper clips in this.
Any agenda? Did they make it over? Does everybody have an agenda? Greg, do you need an agenda? No, you're good. Taking attendance, I'm just thinking.
There one of the new, one of the new agendas there? Is it identical to this or is it?
Oh, no, I made the changes that you asked me to.
Just that bottom change.
Sorry.
Thanks. Yeah, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, that's all.
That was the only change I was supposed to make, right?
Yep. Yep. New one, you're also, what you got?
I'm all set.
Okay.
That's it, right?
That's it.
Any questions on the bills? Mm, it's good?
No. You do like them?
Yes, not the Forgot to do Dan's
Still reading?
I am, I can, I can finish.
Okay. Let's get back to business here. Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
I second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda, any further discussion? Conformal, in favor, opposed? Okay. Minutes of the last meeting?
Um, we're gonna table the minutes of the last meeting.
We are?
We are, because I'm not quite done.
We can do that.
Can we do that?
We can do that.
Right.
So we'll table the last meeting. Okay, Department Heads Committee Chair updates, do we have any? We do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joyce Backshee, Planning Chair, Planning Board Chairman. Our report for July seventeenth, twenty nineteen, the Planning Board update. Since our last report to the board on May fourteenth, planning board members have addressed the following issues. Approval of a site plan review to establish a warehouse, boat, storage dock showroom on Route one oh nine. A preliminary report from Southern Main Planning and Development Commission regarding proposed twenty-two lot subdivision on Young Ridge Road has been received and reviewed. Approval of a conditional use permit establishing a day, a home daycare operation on Milton Mills. Approval of an extraction use permit on Eleventh Street. Modification to an existing approved conditional use permit allowing hosting outdoor events the property owner is requesting to convert a existing barn to host small indoor events, site visits were conducted. The changes, happily to say, the changes to the zoning ordinance regarding timber harvesting were approved at the June twenty-second town meeting. We have the approval of two best practical locations to relocate structures further from the water. In one case, they were about seven feet from the water and we have had them moved back. The board has elected Gavin Maloney as interim chair until Tom is back on his feet. Since we have a new, also our workshops are suspended for the summer. Since we have a new selectman, we would like to explain our planning board procedure. So I'm including in this report the following. An outline of an average timeline, application procedure. When you see that, this timeline, you will see that on average, there are ten meetings before an application is in front of the planning board to be approved. Those ten meetings on average equal three months. That is what the timeline usually is and we can get more into that. What we have done, the land use department and the planning board this year has generated revenues of approximately a hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Reminder, generating that money, that all the fees generated by land use or planning board, those fees are approved and stamped by the Board of Selectmen. They're not fees that we decide on. And that's everything from, if you're growth, a growth permit, a house, three fifty, just for that permit. That doesn't include electrical or plumbing or anything else. That, everything, including an up to copying. We do have our meetings on the first and third Thursdays of each month, that's seven, in the Thomas A. Cash and Taff Meeting Room. And again, the public is invited and we encourage them to come along. If you do look at our timeline, the one thing that I would point out is everything we do for eighty percent of what it is, comes right out of this book. People apply, go in, and they meet with the deputy CEO and the process begins. That is usually good for two or three meetings. Sometimes those meetings can happen in one week, sometimes it takes three weeks. We don't control that. After the meetings with the deputy CEO and the application has all requirements necessary, the applicant meets with the director of planning, Ken. Ken goes over these with them, tells them what they need. He's looking at them with a different set of eyes than the planning board at Brenda does. And at that point, he will usually give it the stamp, okay, this can go to the planning board. They come to the planning board, our first thing is a review of the application. If it's accepted as complete, because we have everything we need, we schedule a site walk, seventy percent of the time. Sightwalks have to be, when are you available for a site walk? When is the board available for a site walk? We do have more trouble in the winter because it's daylight savings time. You know, by four o'clock, we, we can't be out doing sightwalks. So that can add time to the schedule. When we have a site walk, we have to, notices of special meetings have to be posted. After that's all done, the planning board will review the site walk. At that point, we get to have a public hearing. Public hearings require notification and two notifications. The butters have to be notified. It's a long process. Then it finally comes back to the planning board on our agenda, and all the time this is very fluid because we probably have five or six different applicants coming in to us at different stages of the thing. They come in for the final plan review. They have, or we have now, this, which is Planning Board Checklist Review. We go over everything. Conditional use, we go over, we have four pages to go through. Site plan reviews, we have the same thing. Subdivision, a lot to go through. When we check all of these and everything is fine, we can tell ninety-nine percent of the time that these are going to pass, but we have to make sure the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. And if we can, if we have maybe two in an evening and everything is done and the plans are there, conditions are marked on the plans, we may have to put conditions, that's why it is a conditional use permit, we can sign and they're, they're done, they're good, they've got their permits. That is an absolute dead on the money, everything is right, way it happens. And those meetings that I just said, ten meetings, that's usually three months. We, we have one that hopefully will be finished up tomorrow night. First time the applicant came in was in June of twenty eighteen. Then we don't see people for two or three months. Then they come back and then something stops and they come back again. And it just piles up more on our desk and that's why we hope you'll come and see, you know, we'll have an agenda as you have and people won't be there, so we have to table or take no action. But it, at the, the least, it usually, it usually is a three-month thing and we are happy as all get out. Particularly if someone comes in with a best practical location, sometimes we can get that done in four meetings. Two with Ken, the two with Brendan Ken, one with us, we can put it to bed. And that's what we want, because we want to encourage people to come to us. So, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. You two don't have any questions for Joyce?
I'm pretty familiar with planning board stuff.
I would think probably. Any other department heads, committee chairs? Seeing none, we'll move on. Hold business, Fire Rescue Commission, Fire Chief Position.
Well, we've, we've had two meetings. They were great meetings. Got some good people on it. The first meeting we had was what, last week? And then we have a last night, last night, well, the first meeting was, we had to pick our seventh member. We picked our seventh member. And then at that point, we brought him in last night. We made up a schedule of what we wanted to do. Timelines with applications, dah 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 dah. So last night's meeting was to go over applications. We met at seven o'clock. We ended up going through the applications. Before the, before we went through the applications, there was a little discussion before the, we went through the applications, we ended up, I ended up squashing the conversation until after. We'd gone through all the applications, we had nine applications, we got it down to nine, four. And then we had a discussion. The seven members, including myself, so the six other members, the discussion came up that maybe we ought to be looking at maybe a change in what we're looking for. And meaning whether or not the town might be interested in going to a part-time instead of a full-time. The commission talked about it, got some really good feedback on it. At the end of the meeting, I had them do a vote whether or not I should make a suggestion to the, the board, whether or not we ought to look, explore this avenue. And it was unanimous, so that's what I'm doing now. So what I got out of it last night was, what, what they would like to do would be to go to a part-time fire chief, a twenty-hour a week administrative job, still have to go through the, with the standards that we've set. And then to fill the second full-time position, what they would do is take the existing money and hire on a full-time EMT, which would become a wash. And what, that's what the discussion was last night, cause without doing all whatever, but before we, before I give the names for the four, which I'm not doing right now, but before I give the four names of the applicants that we chose last night to do interviews, we ought to, we have to make a decision whether or not this is viable, with, whether or not we can, we should go this route. And if we do, we would have to repost the position. And right now is the time to do that, if this is an option that we are considering. And the commission last night was, was very positive. This is something they seem to think that they, they wanted to do. And so that's why I'm, I'm making a recommendation that that's, we ought to go forward and look at that option.
When you say an EMT, you talking EMT firefighter?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yes. Yeah.
Well, I guess, I guess before I say yes on that, whatever Sharon is, I'm not a firefighter.
She's a paramedic.
Okay.
So
I guess Wayne can
I would like to, yeah, I'll see if I'm Wayne.
I, I did ask, I did ask a couple of the members on the board to come in case there was some questions, because like I said, I know dirt, I don't know fire.
Yeah. Well, you don't know dirt about fire?
I don't know dirt about fire.
Wayne Ham, Captain on the Fire Department. It was discussed, and just to confirm what Ed, your question, it is a firefighter, paramedic position, exactly what Sharon, our current full-timer is right now.
Would that person be working the same shift as Sharon?
The, the same shift, not the same shift as her, exactly. It would be, it would be a twenty-four hour rotation like hers is, but it would be opposite so we can still maintain that
Okay.
Paramedic coverage by adding that extra person, so they wouldn't be paired together.
So you're gonna lose, you're gonna lose
Twenty hours.
You're gonna lose, lose a full-time forty-hour person in a way.
No, Sharon, what's Sharon's hours?
Well, Sharon, Sharon will be there, she's there for forty-plus hours.
So we, we asked Sharon last night what her, what her wage was
Right.
And her wage compared to what, and of course her hours, compared to if we duplicated her position, it would roughly come out as a wash.
Right.
I think what Ed's asking is, will, there'll be somebody there with Sharon at all times?
Yeah, so we have, so on top of, so the current setup right now, on top of the full-time fire chief and the full-time firefighter, paramedic, we have per diem staff. So the, i- if we explore this option, we'd have a part-time fire chief that would essentially be there as a third person during the week or whatever the schedule may be.
Administration.
Right, it would be a third person, but they would have essentially same qual It would be a third person, but they would have essentially the same qualifications that, you know, or greater than our current fire chief, whatever it may be. But they would be available for the calls, they'd be available to help us put extra trucks on the road, depending on the type of incident. They would still be there in that position, but there would still be another 40-hour-a-week position to accommodate that salary that is already allotted for that one position.
Okay.
So we're essentially gonna try to gain two positions out of this. Yes, one's part-time, but we're still gonna maintain that full-time position.
So when you, when you say the other position, the other person like Sharon will work opposite hours, so that you always have a paramedic on duty, right?
Yes.
So the, the person that's taking the full-time working chief now, a per diem, will just fill that in, so Sharon or the new one will never be alone, right?
Yes, yeah, there will always be two people on duty.
I think that's what he was asking.
And one of those at a minimum will be a paramedic.
Yeah, but one now is that working fire depart, fire chief, so if you cut his hours down to 20, I think Ed was asking, wanted to make sure a per diem was gonna be filling that in.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
I was thinking you were gonna put the new person with Sharon.
No.
But if it's gonna be a paramedic, yeah, it needs to be separate, so.
Correct.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
And why would we, what, can you kind of explain why we would want to do this? What's our reasoning?
Well, I think it's still, there's still a lot of discussion that needs to happen. With, as the group, just face value, I just hit on a couple of them. You're gonna, you're gonna have a third person there, so many hours a week, probably just like any fire chief, is gonna exceed the amount of hours that is established there anyway. So you're gonna have that third person there, depending on the calls, that's gonna increase the amount of trucks we can put on the road, especially during the day, that's gonna increase, putting two trucks on the road potentially, or, you know, if it's a motor vehicle accident, you're putting your crew on the ambulance, and you still, you have that third person there to get the engine on the road. So it's gonna increase those capabilities. I also think that, again, a lot of discussion still needs to happen at the committee level, but that fire chief would also be available, again, hopefully to, if there was a vacancy in the shift schedule, one of the, like, say Sharon takes a vacation day, and nobody else on our per diem side can fill that gap, he will...
You guys had an issue with that July 4th weekend, didn't you?
Sure, sure. So they will have a, the ability to fill that slot as well, and work that out. But again, it's all to be discussed at the committee and then at you guys' level.
Yeah. I don't know if that's actually to be discussed at the committee level, that's really for us to decide, yeah, we want to do it, and then they look to hire on...
I think, I think probably what we ought to do as a, as the, well, I don't know, for commission.
Thank you, Wayne.
Whatever you want to call it.
Yeah.
I think with the seven people, the seven of us on that committee, you know, they can make their recommendations, I can relay them to you guys. We still have other things we have to work on also. We did find out that there's no set policy of what the fire chief's job is.
Yeah, job description.
Job description, so.
I still find that hard to believe, but...
Yeah.
Well, I found, we did find one from Mrs. Yeton, that she typed up.
Yeah, but that goes way back.
Yeah, but...
That really wasn't pertinent to what we're doing now, so.
Yeah, no, no, I agree, I understand. But we found everything from the prior commission, and I spoke to the fire chief too, and he said, no, we just went over the, off the posting.
Of the job dis...
So if, the thing, what I, I think the commission needs tonight to know is whether or not this is an avenue we can explore. Because what's gonna happen is, we've gone down the four candidates. Before we send anything to anybody saying, you know, we want to do an interview with you, if we decide we're gonna go this route, explore it, then we're gonna need more time. And then what we're gonna have to do is, what I would suggest doing is probably sending the candidate to let us say that there might be a change in the position, dah dah dah, just to give them a heads up, just so, whatever. But we're gonna have to do that, plus the timeframe, looking at, right now, Mr. Johnson's leaving on the 31st. We've got next week's meeting, and then the 31st is on his last day. I believe that we probably ought to appoint an intern for the 1st of August, just to, you know, be proactive, get everything set, so we don't have to worry about overlap. And so, yeah. But we have to make a decision tonight whether or not we should explore it, so we can hold off on the interviews. Because we do have, our schedule was the 22nd and the 23rd, do two interviews per night. But if we're gonna explore this, which myself, I, they convinced me last night it was a pretty good idea to explore.
Yeah, I've, I've heard rumors, and I bounce it around in my head, and it probably does make a lot of sense. We just gotta make sure that we, you were calling it administrative. We'll make sure we call it working, you know, working fire chief.
But...
Rather than just don't get a pencil pusher.
Exactly. We don't want, we don't want that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but what I'm saying, but that's, his job's gonna do a lot of the administrative.
Right, right. Oh, yeah, that's the job of the chief anyway.
Yeah, he's still gonna take care of the, the emergency management and all that.
Yep, yep.
So, but, you know, with the discussion we had, it was, it was, it was a very good meeting. Very good meeting, everybody was positive, we got a lot of input from everybody. Like I said, I'm, I'm not, for me, looking at EMT this, firefighter this, firefighter that, I, but I'm taking, I'm trying to absorb what these people know, and it made a lot of sense, so.
Good.
So...
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it.
I'm not either, this is the way I wanted to go earlier, so.
So we'll do that, if we can...
I'd say, yeah, I don't know if we need a formal vote or not, but...
No, so I guess I just need instructions. So, I mean, we can, we can reach out to the, I guess, a couple of things. I mean, so you can do two things at once. If you, if, if we're certain that the committee is, is thinking 20 hours, that that's gonna fit, we could work on a posting and at least get that running and start getting applications in. I mean, we could reach out to the four that you've chosen and say, you know, we're reconsidering the structure of our fire department, would you be interested in an interview if it's only a part-time job? If I could call those four and ask them that, and in the meantime, still run a job, run...
Well, we, we really have to repost it, because there might be some people who wanted a part-time job only, so.
I never, didn't apply for it, right.
But I think the other applicants that we denied, I would probably send them a, a letter saying that their services weren't needed.
Yeah, because you're probably not gonna consider them for part-time if you didn't consider them for full-time.
They weren't, okay, okay.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna call the four names and just see if they're interested in part-time. Do you have any idea what kind of salary we're looking at? So 20 hours is not gonna get them any health insurance or any benefits, these are questions that will come up.
It would be half the...
I, I think, maybe we were doing the math last night, we were just talking about to make it so that we can still do that full-time EMT that you're talking about, a $20,000 dollar job, to make the numbers work.
Twenty thousand divided by 52 is 384 a week, divided by 20 hours, so they'd be making $19.23 an hour.
That ain't gonna work.
That's not enough. No, that's not gonna work at all.
If, if the full-time job was 40 hours, at 60...
It should be at least 30.
It should be at least 30.
Gonna have to do that.
Because you're not paying them benefits.
No, no.
All right, so $30,000 divided by 52.
They can look in the budget, somewhere in the budget, there may be a little bit more to...
Be up to $29 an hour if you use the $30,000.
That's about where it should be. I mean, it should be up to where the road commissioners are and whatnot, up in that area. I mean, that's what it always was, actually. It was that, the fire chief was always the road commissioner.
So when is your next meeting, Monday?
We have a meeting, we have interviews scheduled for Monday.
So do you want to just have a meeting and get your thoughts together and then reach out to me?
Well, we were planning on having a meeting before anyways, because we were gonna come up with questions and all that, because we didn't get to that last night. So as long as the schedules work, I believe the schedules do work, because that's why we ended up scheduling what we did.
But if we repost it, are you still gonna interview on Monday?
No.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, so if you guys met...
Wouldn't make any sense to do interviews when we, there may be other applicants.
So if you meet Monday and work out all the details, numbers and everything, budget, the whole nine yards, and then you and I can talk on Tuesday, and then I can make phone calls and help you create a new updated posting.
We were just, the numbers we were throwing around, we were throwing those numbers around just, just to make so the other, the other thing fit. And obviously...
And I think you have, don't they have closer to $65,000?
Well, it was 65.
That's right, and we cut it because we knew that, right?
Yeah, the number's 60.
And is there a need for a job description?
There's definitely a need for a job description.
So that needs to be done, I would think, before we even...
And there, I mean, and you have the authority. I mean, once you figure out what hours and what hourly rate it should be at, when you're commissioned, you come back to the board of selectmen, I mean, you can, you know, make adjustments within the lines, you know, just because the salary line is 60,000 doesn't mean that we can't break it up and do, you know, 30 and 40, and move the 10, but you're gonna have to agree on where the board wants to move the other 10 from, so.
And we gotta, and also, if it's a part-time position, the person coming in, obviously, if it's 20 hours, we don't, we're not gonna give the benefits, so we don't have to worry about that aspect of it anyway.
Not for that person, but you would for the paramedic, for the other person.
That's already covered, because...
Right, it's already covered for the other person.
The other person, so.
Yeah, so really, all you gotta come up with is another, what, 10?
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, so...
So, so we're gonna, we're gonna roll that route for the...
I'm happy with it.
Okay?
Yeah.
So am I, are we working on a posting before Monday, or do you want to talk to the commission first and kind of...
I think, I think we probably ought to meet on Monday.
So I'll wait to hear from you Tuesday.
Because when we start discussing some numbers, I don't, I don't, I don't know if the post that we put back out, if we're gonna, the last post didn't have a number.
No, but we did get calls. I mean, they did ask what our, some of the calls we got were just, what's your full-time fire chief making now?
Yeah.
And I would try to, I would explain to all of them.
But anybody knows that when you're, you're working for a municipality, that that number could change.
Right.
Here in town meetings.
So I'm not gonna do anything until I hear from you on Tuesday.
Okay.
Right?
Okay. All set with that? Move on to Rec Director.
So that's tabled, I know that the Rec Committee is talking about it downstairs, so hopefully next week you'll have a, an update.
Okay, Loop Road.
So I gave you guys the paperwork, I know that Leslie's gonna speak on it as well.
Leslie Berlin, we went and inspected Loop Road, and Scott Looney did the work, he did an unbelievable job. Actually, there was only one problem that we found, and that was actually a, a problem that the state needs to take care of, because the culvert at the end of Loop Road on Milton Mills, one side is completely blocked, so we'll have to be...
Gets blocked every year.
Yeah.
Every year.
So it's, it is again this year, so we'll, we'll be working on that. Their, Loop Road's paperwork was all in order, and the Road Committee voted and is recommending that we reimburse them for the $1,300 that they're asking for. I also would like to, just, you know, quick reminder about the gravel road workshop on the, on July 31st.
We've had a lot of people come in, for some reason, I think they sign up at the town hall, so we've had a lot of people come in. So we just, I've been, I printed off the form and hand them out, and get them, circle the address down bottom, and get them to mail them right off, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I sent Linda an email asking about what kind of response they've had, she hasn't answered me at this point.
She, oh, she hasn't answered?
No.
I, I mean, I feel comfortable saying that, I bet I've handed out at least, I mean, most, six, seven, at least, at least six or seven.
Okay.
And those are just people off the street, not your regular road guys and you guys that I'm trusting are going, so.
Right, so, anyway, I just wanted to throw that reminder out there, because it's a great resource.
When was the, when is it again, Leslie?
It's July 31st.
Did we want to put it out to Shapley? Did you want me to?
I had an opportunity, yes, absolutely. I had an opportunity to, to talk to Jeff Goodwin, and I did let him know about it, so, and especially since it does give four credits for continuing education, so I thought that, you know, he'd be a good person to, you know, let know, in case, you know, if he didn't, if he need, didn't need the credits, maybe some of his people did. I did let him know that.
I'll send it along over there, too.
So, but yeah, if you could definitely throw that out in Shapley, I mean...
Yeah, we'll get it out there. Is there anything that, as far as the room, any preparation I need to do in advance?
I asked Linda, you know, if there's anything that she needed me to do, again, she hasn't answered me, so.
Well, just let me know.
Because I offered to, you know, do whatever needed to be done to make sure that the class goes off well.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it. Okay. So I don't see this anywhere else on their agenda, so we'll act on it right now. So what is your wishes for Loop Road, $1,300 out of the Article 43 fund?
I'm making a motion to re-inburs Loop Road, what's that, Neighborhood Works, the $1,300.
I'll second that.
Moving to second it, to reimburse Loop Road, Neighbor, Neighbor Works, which is their association, the $1,300 under Article 43. Any further discussion? Of our vote, in favor, or opposed?
So just so you know, sir, we cut checks once a week in the town, so this will get submitted next week, so next Monday, it'll get cut, and if you don't pick it up Thursday during business hours, we'll automatically mail it to you.
Yeah, I just added the date to it. Another successful candidate from Article 43. So, now that's, when did that come to us?
Well, the money's just rolling over based on how the statutory reserve account was. And yeah, Michelle and I had a, had a conversation with, I don't wanna name the street, because I might get it wrong.
We're still working on the same $50,000 now.
Well, we're still, right, because we didn't appropriate any money at this year's town meeting, but there was, there was questions as whether or not if the work got done in the prior fiscal year, if they could apply now. And Michelle spoke to one of the roads today and said it could, because it just rolls over, so.
So we can do that.
Yep.
Okay.
So we should see another one coming in to apply.
Okay, sounds good. We haven't come anywhere close to spending the 50, so...
No, I know, I think we've, this might, I think we've done, what, two $3,000 ones and less than 10.
Probably a good idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Two threes, five, five or six.
Anything else on that?
Nope.
Okay. ACO Lebanon.
She would like $13.50 an hour.
$13.50 an hour.
How many hours?
Three.
$13.50 an hour.
Times mileage, federal rate.
And the mileage was, well, how much?
54-ish.
Yeah.
54.
And she can have much more than 10 miles.
Uh, no, she has...
Well, if you live on the other side of Lebanon, it's a long ways.
Well, no, she was driving, remember, she was driving around door-to-door trying to find the owner. So if the board, if the board is okay with paying it, we'll send the letter, see seeing the selectmen, and I'll certainly let you proof it first, like I do all the letters that go out, thanking her, but reiterating that...
Sounds like a pretty good deal for getting a bind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Okay. D6, you haven't had a chance to do anything with...
I called, they're looking into them, they're not something they have on the shelf, so.
Okay.
I did have a concern, though.
Yes.
I thought about it. Now, you guys want to haul this down to the fairgrounds, there might be a couple of issues before we do that, because it does have some leaks and this and that. I'm worried about hauling it down there than having to haul it back. I believe probably just, before we bring it down there, until there's some sort of building for it and all that, maybe we should just put it in our shed for now.
With the idea of hauling it down there, try to get some interest in...
Yeah, I know, but what happens if we don't get any interest? Then we gotta turn around and move it again.
We're gonna, we're gonna move it again regardless. It was gonna be moved down and back anyway.
Well, if we move it right to the town shed.
Yeah, but I wanted to display it at the fairgrounds. That was the whole gist of the thing.
I, it does have a wooden cab on it, it hasn't been exposed to the elements in, like, a zillion years, so.
Yeah, one downpour won't hurt it.
Yeah.
I've been that route.
Yep.
So, I mean, I'd still like to get it down there for the fair. I've still got to touch base with the fair on it, but, so, okay.
Be nice to get some interest, maybe get some donations.
That's what I'd like to shoot for, is try to get some donations to put a roof over it down there.
Yeah.
So, and I think having Exhibit A sitting there is far better than showing a picture, so...
Yeah.
And for three or four days, be kind of a neat, neat thing to get out. Okay. Personnel policy.
So this is the personnel policy that you guys approved on July 2nd. We never got around to signing. I remember the change was just increasing the paid time off for the Director of Planning to 40 hours and the two employees that we increased to 32 hours but are exempt from health insurance based on the hire date.
Okay. Okay. We did approve this back along, didn't we?
I believe you did, because I didn't, remember, it was still grayed out and you were going to come in and sign it that night?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, that was my first meeting, I think we did that one, so...
Thank you.
All righty.
That's it, okay. On to new business. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
Well, before we do that, are we leaving the camera on this time?
I would say not.
I don't think we need to.
I don't think so.
Shut it off.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's included.
Yeah, I mean, we normally always shut it off when we go into executive session, so shut camera and live feed off, so. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to go into executive session. MRS A, 4056A.
7/11.
Do I hear a second?
I hear seconded.
Move to seconded?
7/11, the time is.
At 7/11. Okay, all in favor, all opposed, okay. Okay, do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
Make a motion to come out of executive session.
I'm at 7:55. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Move to seconded to come out of executive session. All those in favor, all opposed, okay. Appointments.
The only appointment that I have is for Dan Archibald for the Fire Rescue Commission. They chose him, and I just created an appointment, so I'm sorry, I'm not quite...
He's the one from the public.
Right.
Oh, good.
And he did attend the first meeting, but it's a good deal.
Okay, Certificate of Appointment Title 30, MRS A 2253, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, to Dan Archibald. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions, the laws of the State of Maine hereby appoint you as Fire Rescue Commission member within and for the Municipality of Acton August 30th, or until August 30th, 2019, given under his hand the 17th day of July, 2019. What is your wishes?
Make a motion to, what is it?
Appoint.
To appoint Dan Archibald to the Fire Rescue Commission.
I'll second that.
Move to seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed?
No, I'm not opposed. I'm in favor.
Okay, all in favor, all opposed, okay. Would please? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Library Lights.
So Ed, you may remember before the election change, Elise had some lights out in the library and we had the electrician come in and kind of give us a quote of where we're at. So it's to replace everything in there and make them LEDs, 10 total lights with the rebate from a finished...
Should she made?
Thank you. $1,100 is what you would be looking at to change all the lights in the library.
And is this money in her budget?
She doesn't budget for building maintenance because it's not her building.
So we, that's...
We pay, yeah, to add the lead, so...
We have...
I mean, so I guess I would kind of, I mean, depending, we'd have to look at it again to see how bad it is, but if we could wait until at least halfway through the fiscal year to see what else, because we could take it out of building maintenance, but you know, with your plowing and your, I mean, your, you know what I mean, your handyman and the cleaning, everything, I don't know how much wiggle room really is in there with the mowing and...
I would suggest that what we do is we wait until in the spring when we've gone through most of the year, see what money's left, and if it's not something that has to be necessarily done...
Well, she did mention, because with the reading, the lights in the kids' eyes and...
It's dark in there, it really is.
Yeah, I mean, 1,100 bucks is really, that's really pretty reasonable to replace all those lights. How many lights were there, did it say?
10.
10.
Want to maybe take a look at it and we can look at it for next week?
Less than 100 bucks a light, or just over 100 bucks a light.
We could look and see if we have any wiggle room and if not, we can wait a while.
And the other thing is that we could put the regular bulbs in there now just to fix it, fix it immediately and then take David's recommendation.
Could be quite a savings though in electricity probably to the LEDs, right?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Should be, yeah.
Especially when you're talking 10 lights.
This wasn't something you guys had budgeted prior.
No. No, I think this was after, came up after the budget season was already...
This is the same electrician that does most of our stuff?
Yes. Want to think about it for next week?
Yeah, let's think about it and, yep, yep. Okay. Forest Conservation openings.
So we kind of talked about that in the workshop a little bit, so we have two seats open, one to June of 2020 and one to June of 2022. So with the Boards okay, I will start advertising it and see if we can find some people that might like to sit on that committee.
Yes. Resignation. Let's see, Board of a Selectmen, oh, this letter is to notify you that I'll be retiring from the Town of Acton Transfer Station on Saturday, September 1st, 2019, submitted by Perry Me. Huh, be sad to see him go, but I can understand why he'd want to retire, so...
So he's been talking about it a little bit. I've met with Bob to kind of talk about the procedure. There may be a temporary fill-in that may be interested in moving up, but I encouraged him that we really shouldn't be doing anything until we officially had a resignation. We didn't want to push him into the retirement, but at the same time, we didn't want to assume when it was going to be, so Perry came in and asked me to type something up for him, so...
How long has Perry been up there?
I think he said 12 years.
Can...
So, I guess a little closer, maybe we'll plan on bringing him into one of the meetings and doing a little something for him.
Yeah, definitely, we should do something for him, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, he's going to be sadly missed up there, so... Okay, meet and greet date with the deputy.
So I contacted the Sheriff's Department like you asked me to, July 31st, August 7th, and August 21st are the three Wednesdays that... That he's available. Let's see, so I'm trying to find my calendar here.
The 31st, or, is it July?
So July 31st, yeah, which was two weeks away. Get through our other situation first, maybe August 7th.
I would say the 7th would work.
You okay with you guys?
Yeah.
So I will try to, I mean, how do you, so how do you want to do, how do you want me to prepare the format? I mean, we can, I mean, I can keep the agenda pretty much at a minimum. I mean, there's, you know, where we don't meet any other time, there's going to be, I'm going to need to see you for a few minutes, or we could do that first and take a break and then jump into a light agenda afterwards.
That's what I would think. I'd do that first, yeah.
Because I'm thinking, wait, half hour or 45 minutes, depending on how many people show up?
Half an hour, probably, yeah, yeah.
So I won't schedule anything else that night substance.
Yeah, yeah, because he may, you know, he may have some words of wisdom for us and whatnot, and I don't know if Sheriff King would come with him or not, but...
He will, because remember, he's promised refreshments.
Yes, he did.
And I reminded him of that in an email.
You're right, yep, so, yeah, we'll definitely need the half hour.
How many times did he say that at town meeting?
Yeah.
Quite a few, so let's remind you.
And of course, the moderator kept reminding him, so that was good. So we'll make sure that they're here and...
Yeah, tell them there'll be at least 40 people here, so...
We need leftovers.
Yes, exactly. Yep, okay. Okay, Item G, Brenda is left, correct, I believe?
Yes, she did, yeah.
Yes, okay, so we don't need that, okay. Next item we have is public comment. Anyone from the public?
With my limited, doesn't slong, with my limited knowledge of technology, could somebody tell me what happened to the last three Selectmen's meetings?
Yes, I was going to address that towards the end down here.
Okay.
They've been taken down due to a personnel issue. And that's all I can say.
They will, they will go back up.
Most likely, but right now, they've been taken down due to a personnel issue.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, can you just clarify that you made that request?
I was the one that made the request to take them down, yes.
No staff.
Yes. Yep, anyone else in the public, public comment?
Hi, Lisa Long. I'm fresh out of a Rec Committee meeting where I was just elected the chairman.
Congratulations.
So I have a few things that I just wanted to bring to your attention. We have four new people that would like to be appointed to the committee. Would you like their names now? Norman and Raquel Wilson, Abby, I'm probably going to butcher her last name and I apologize for that, Mastree, and John Botel.
Okay. So that would make it full then, right?
That makes eight.
Don't we need an odd number?
We don't need to, I mean, they can...
We're still trying to recruit other people. These are just the ones we...
So how many, what is the goal? How many are you going to have when all is said and done?
An odd number.
Okay.
I think we're going to shoot for, shoot for 11, but be happy with nine. The other thing that we wanted to talk about was the new keys for the gym. Can I come up maybe tomorrow night, Jen, and see you for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just the outside door?
Yeah, the outside door, the interior door locked in and changed.
Right, I mean, if you want to follow me, if you want to just follow me in the office, I'll give you one before I leave.
Perfect, and I wanted to update you guys. I know this has been an ongoing issue, but we finally came up with a list of roles and responsibilities. We voted on them tonight and I will get an email copy of that to you guys ASAP.
Good.
Sounds good.
Did your new members vote?
They did not.
Okay. They weren't appointed yet. I'm going to have you reiterate it next week if you, just in case, never roll the trails. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I'm being told that I'm supposed to notify you guys that we voted to table the Director position. Give our committee three months to see what we can do on our own and readdress it in three months, if that's okay with the Board.
Sounds fine.
Good idea.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Makes perfectly good sense. Any other public comment?
Joe DiOrio, Lakeside Drive Road Association. We're getting together with some other associations to have our ditches and culverts cleaned out, sucked out or whatever. There's a company that will be given an estimate on that. I was going to check with the committee, see if we can use the Article 43 funds for that as a group and not as an individual association.
I think you're going to have to do it as each association to apply.
Probably, and would that actually, how does that benefit the lakes, I guess, is my question.
Well, clean out the basins, with the basins, that's where all the sand goes, and then when the basins fill up, then the sand starts dumping out in the lake, so theoretically, I guess it would...
Yep, okay. Yeah, I'd say it would have to be individually, I guess, because there's no one association for all associations.
So you'd have to do each way.
So if you took the bill, you know, if your bill is $3,000 and you have three associations, it'd be $1,000 apiece.
Okay, so each association will apply separately, don't you say?
Yeah.
Yeah, just better bookkeeping that way, too.
I think we have to do it that way.
But I was hoping with the amount of funds you still have in there, we could use that as one group and then still put in further maintenance, but...
Yeah, and if I can just ask a question, because this came in today and I want to make sure I understand, so, so the two roads that already got the $3,000 were, what were those?
Lakeside.
It was Tattle, Lakeside, and Miami Shore.